The ambiance.
Give me the thumbs up, Julia. No stress today, right?
Never, never.
Whenever I tease you, we go dark, something bad happens.
I know. I'm worried, but we're good, we're alive.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Warsaw Town Council. We are now in session. Your rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All be seated. Okay, council, we have our typical consent agenda in the packet. I trust you've all reviewed that. I'll entertain any edits or a motion to approve.
Now we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. We're gonna move right into public comment. And we have several people in the hall, but I only see one person that has checked the box, Mr. Cliff Mullin. Would you like to step up? I think we missed you last month.
I'm sorry, it was another issue, and I apologize for not having the opportunity to come to this illustrious meeting. As always, welcome to y'all tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. Jay Clifford Mullin, that's J, the initial. Eighty-three fifty-one Historyland Highway, Warsaw, Virginia. Appreciate the chance to come and speak with you tonight. Town of Warsaw, the beauty of the town continues to, it's hard to say now, this time of year with the with the gray and the colors of fall coming, but the beauty of the town continues to come on more and more. The sidewalk work that I see happening on the town's main street between Belleville Lane and St. John Street is very nice. The sidewalk work that's been done at the light at the bank, I still want to say Norman State Bank, at the light in the middle of town has beautified the town even more and looks good on the efforts that y'all are doing. Whether you agree with me or not, the road work that VDOT did makes the town look good, all nice and prim and proper and bright and pretty. And if nothing else, the eastbound lane of Route 360 through town at the light, you can go through there and not have to hold your seat. The seat, the road is nice and smooth, you can go through there and not bounce. Stuff that you have your coffee cup in your hand, you don't have to worry about spilling coffee. So I think all this is good, and we'll see how all this goes. It was very, very good to see all this going on. Several weeks ago, I had the privilege of meeting with your town manager, and we sat and talked a few minutes about different things about the town. Subjects, I'm gonna just hit highlights. Subjects that we talked about were the creamery, the highway department here in town, future sidewalk work that's going on in town, and how things are being handled in these things. And he gave me some very good points on some of the plans, some of the ideas that y'all have going. And I don't want to publicly let that stuff out, but I will tell you that what he told me made me feel good about the works that the town council is doing and that town is thinking about. And what I'll do is watch these things in the future and see how they progress, and we'll see what else we can do to encourage you. And if you have any questions, you have my address, and if you need to get in touch with me, I'll be glad to help you. But last and final, I don't know if you've been out to the animal clinic lately, but the DI out there that I started talking with y'all about way back, I assume that y'all have seen that the church has done a good job of boxing it all in, covering it up. It looks very good, looks very professional, and looks very safe. And I appreciate the work that y'all did to get that started, and your support on having this done. Round in our county, anything that can be a hindrance or a possible danger is something we all want to be looking for. And I'm sorry that I seem to be so pushy on it, but I wanted to make sure that it was something that wasn't just swept under the rug where too many times we'll see it. But I thank you for your time and continue with your good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the hall would like to speak that did not sign up to speak? Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment portion of our meeting. And we're gonna go right to the mayor's report. And a few things. I don't know if you all knew or heard, but we had an election recently. And whether you like how things turned out or not, elections have results, election has consequences, elections say what we're gonna be doing in the future. So to that end, one of our dear, dear councilmates here, Mr. Ogilvy Forrest, he did not win his election bid this time around. And I say that with a lot of pride because this man has brought many years of wisdom and service to this community. And he has always spoke his mind. We haven't always agreed.
We're not supposed to?
No, we're not. It could have been a little easier on me every now and then. But rest assured, we're gonna do something really nice for him in the coming, coming month. But I just wanted to acknowledge tonight publicly that Ogilvy has been a big key part of what you've seen in Warsaw in the revitalization. So he may not be on council too much longer, but he will be telling us his opinions and giving us guidance and sharing his wisdom because there's some things we talk about no one on this board understands but him. So we'll, we'll keep you close.
Thank you, Randy.
Congratulations to Mary Beth and Ralph, both winning your reelection bids. Now, Mary Beth, this is your third term? Second term, second term. And Ralph, you've been on for quite a while now.
I think I'm on my fourth, maybe.
Fourth. Seems longer than that, but okay.
I'm just saying, at least I bet.
Well, congratulations to you both. I'm very pleased you, y'all are gonna be with us for another another four years.
Yep.
So that's good. We have a couple newcomers that ran for election and won seats. Mr. Bobby Walters, real excited to get to know him better. A member of, living in the town and been really supportive for, well, just really supportive of what the town's been doing. So really excited to hear his voice and take part on that. And Ms. Daphne Powellmore, who lives right across the street. Daphne won her election bid, so we're real excited to be working with her and getting to know her better and, and see where all this, this takes us. They're gonna have a busy couple of months getting orientated and possible going to Richmond for some, for some conferences if they can to learn what it's, what it's about being an elected councilperson in the state of Virginia, what the, the pain in the neck things are, like FOIA requirements and things like that, the rule of three. And just, they have a lot, a lot to learn, and I think they'll be real excited. So that, that's, that's really good. So. All for that for now. So that said, I'm going to move on to the town manager's report.
All right, good evening. I'm going to skip over number one and do that at the end because I'm gonna plug the laptop up and get that going for Christmas Town. So item number two, a Town Bucks Program recap. We are pleased to report that nearly 375 households in Warsaw, Richmond County participated in our first ever Town Bucks Program. A copy of the spreadsheet referencing all the participants can be found in your council emails. We've heard very positive feedback from the participating businesses thus far, and we appreciate everyone's patience and kindness as we deployed the program for the first time. And our staff did a phenomenal job, and we did 375 households in three hours, so, with five people. So we were, we were rolling. Item number three, crosswalk installation. We're very pleased with the final product of the brickpaver crosswalks at the Court Circle intersection. We hope that this will not only improve the appearance of the intersection, but they will also bring increased awareness to drivers regarding pedestrian crossing. Now that our sidewalks are complete, this will work to tie in the college campus and adjacent neighborhoods to our downtown shopping district. Item number four, the DHCD sidewalk improvement project. As you may have seen, we're wrapping up our sidewalk addition and parking lot improvements at 184 Main Street. Per our DHCD agreement for the housing project, we were required to spend $30,000 in town on sidewalk improvements. We then partnered with Ms. Potts, who owns 184 Main, to split the cost of the project. The town came in under budget with $25,000 spent, with that amount nearly being matched one-to-one by Ms. Potts with a total investment on her end of $19,125 for a total project cost of $44,125 or $5,875 under budget. Fran Swanscapes and MG Paving completed the work, and I think they did a great job. And this now completes the last section of the downtown area that we've been trying to revitalize over the last five years. I plan to include for your review and the budget, $30,000 annually for sidewalk improvements across town with the hopes that our, we have very well-informed citizens that have spoken with me, and I, we see it on Facebook. We want to try to work on the, the gap between 7-Eleven and our downtown area. So that's what I'll be putting in the proposed budget for y'all to review. Item number five, trunk or treat recap. Thank you to the Warsaw, Richmond County Main Street Program for doing a wonderful job with trunk or treat this year. They estimated 2,500 to 3,000 participants, which is a record-breaking year. And I know that we in our office bought 100 pounds of candy. And you, and what did the police department?
Approximately 100 pounds.
So 200 pounds of candy.
Actually ran out.
And we've almost, did you, you ran out?
We ran out. We were resupplied, thankfully.
Wow.
So I was out several times through that time of 5:00 and 7:30, and probably going by three or four times. And they were past, way past the Methodist church every time.
Yeah.
That was just, I'd never seen that before.
Yep. So the Main Street folks, actually, we've discussed submitting a VDOT request to close the road in the downtown area because they, they said kids were dropping candy running out in the street the entire time. And with it getting to be 3,000, 4,000, we're probably gonna have to go ahead and start doing that. So I think next year, you may see just that small downtown area closed for traffic. But I love things like that. I'm so glad to see that many people in our downtown and thank them for doing that. Warsaw Fest recap. We want to thank the Warsaw, Richmond County Chamber of Commerce for hosting another successful Warsaw Fest. The parade was a great time. Thank you all to the council members and staff that, that came out with us. And the event was fortunate enough to have beautiful weather and good crowds, and we look forward to next year. Item number seven, Domino's update. So we're pleased to announce that Domino's is slated to hold a soft opening on December 9th, which I thought, wasn't anticipating that soon when you look at the building, but she assured me the contractors are working constantly. So December 9th, and then they will be fully open in time for Christmas Town on December 14th. And so we'll post
December 14th, right?
As of today. Yep. So we'll try to get a ribbon cutting in somewhere, so just please check your emails and I'll send something out. Number eight, council dinner. You should have received an email regarding the town council Christmas dinner next month. So please get that info back in to us. And this year, very exciting, it will be held in the old Rappahannock Brewing Building. We appreciate the town council's tradition of foregoing any monthly pay in order for us to hold a large dinner event for all the town council and staff members and their families. Again, just please respond as soon as you can so we can get a idea of the numbers we're looking at. Number nine, election recap. So I know the mayor sort of said everything that I was gonna say. Again, I want to add in a personal note to Councilmember Forrest. And we're gonna do something next month, but just right now, quickly, I so appreciate you for your guidance and your steadfast dedication. And thank you for everything that you've done for the town.
Yeah, it's been my honor to be here.
Well, and you're not going anywhere. We're gonna keep you around, and I know where you live and you know where I work, so it'll all, it'll all work out.
Ogilvy, you remember how green he was when we first heard him?
Yeah, but I thought he would come around, and he did.
With y'all's help, it, it worked out.
Amongst these country folks, and we brought him around.
And a good segue into that, my last little item for a point of personal privilege. I'm honored to share that November 7th was the start of my eighth year as town manager, which sort of can't believe. It's fallen by so quickly. And then in some ways, it seems like a long time, but I want to thank each of you for allowing me to continue our efforts and ensuring our town is moving in the right direction, and we continue to grow and improve and to be the absolute best that we can be. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have a phenomenal staff and our many residents and business owners that participate, care, and join in, or what make it all possible. So thank you to everyone. And on that note, I'm going to pull up the Christmas Town map, and I'm gonna try to
Councilors, any questions on any of the topics or town manager coverage?
Okay. Just like one or two.
Eight years.
Eight years.
We should. And I slipped, I'll get that, I'll get that going. I don't know about that, but I'll say it. It's a good catch.
We don't have in-house IT, so always get nervous when things take a while. See if I can brighten up a little bit. I don't know if I'll work on there. Okay, so I'll do my best here. This year, we have a few differences since we are combining the Christmas parade with Christmas Town. So we have this red, that's the route for the Christmas parade, so we've left this area of town open. Where in past years, we've had, you know, various vendors and things through this stretch. So we're calling the town park the Christmas Village, if you will. Missy and I went out and measured, and we can comfortably place about 80 to 85 vendors there. I think we're gonna do 75 to make sure we have enough room. Then we're also gonna have heating stations, and we have restrooms, both at the park restroom and I think a couple of portable restrooms. And we'll have food trucks in there as well. I think this year, we are at 125 vendors, which we tried to cap at 100, but we thought, we have a little more room, we can, we can do that.
How does that compare to last year?
We capped at 100 each of the previous years, so 25 more. And then we have extra rides this year, so this entire red block will be locations of various carnival rides that, you know, spin around fast, go upside down, whatever they may be, but we have quite a few of those. Here in the middle, we have police and EMS, so that'll sort of help, you know, be centralized. And then in Williston, she has offered to lift up the garage door again and have Santa in there prior to the parade. So I think two hours prior to the parade, Santa will be in there, and then he'll, he'll hop on for the parade. This year, we do have live carolers that are gonna be going around the event for most of the day. And we also have a handbell choir that's gonna stick around most of the day and go around and, and do that, so it's
What's the hours of the event?
1:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, December 14th. There is a concert at Oyster Shoals the night before Friday, and that's the, featuring The Drys, which I know they were on The Voice, and I think very well-known regionally and well across the state. So again, for council and staff, we will be parking here at Town Hall. So we have every single, even part-time, I think we have Hickey coming back, everybody's working that day, so. And then I know our police department, you've worked hard to actually do a deal, like we'll, they'll trade officers with another locality in lieu of overtime, so I think Colonial Beach has a few officers they're sending. Okay. We have state police coming in, and I think state police is gonna offer up, what did you request?
Drones and a command center.
A command center and some drones, so.
All right, very good.
Yeah, which I think is great. We will be having bay transit like we have in the previous years, so I haven't labeled it yet, but the, one of the bus stops will be here at Town Hall for folks to get off the bus and go walk around the area. For the employees that need to work at the businesses downtown, they have, like last years, they have behind the Tap House and that parking lot. We have permission from Verizon this year again, so all the vendors will be parking here, and a few of the Relish employees will be parking there as well. We will have two ice skating rinks because they're so popular. Those will be located right here, near the crosswalk in front of Relish and near Michelle's. And then we have the Hangar, which is the live acrobatic group out of Rappahannock. They'll be right here. We were thinking if you're eating dinner in the Tap House, it'd be pretty neat to see them with fire going up in the air and all that. So they'll be right here, and then the ice skating. And then we will have a stretch of vendors down Main Street for those that are leftover from the park area. And then we'll have a food truck area along here, because I do think this year we have 20 food vendors. Now that includes from popcorn to everything, but I think we have about 20. And through here, we have just a general parking area. Our handicap parking area will be where the town owns at 74 Main. So we'll have that conned off. This year, we've had to expand because we have so much going on, and the parade route took up some of our square footage. So we'll actually have the Christmas train that will be chugging along here across the new asphalt trail, and they'll circle here, come back, circle, and come back. We'll have the lights in the pond lit up for Christmas. And we, our public works crews worked with Harrison Contracting, and we'll have a lot of like big Christmas lights down here this year.
How will people traverse the highway there?
Yep. So we're gonna work with our police department to determine if it's best to have them here. We are worried about ADA compliance with this stretch of sidewalk really is just a set of stairs. So we're, that's sort of like one of those last finishing touches. We think it might be easier to have it crossing from the bank and just have a crossing guard here so they could go straight across to Wallace Street. But that's something
I would suggest when, when the final plan is decided upon, that it is well-signed.
Yeah.
So people will know where to go and where those cross spots are.
Absolutely.
I'm guessing we'll have officers at those points where the cross spots are?
Yes, we will. And state police will be handling this entire intersection for traffic control. But yes, we'll have quite a few law enforcement here that day to help out. We will have the horse and carriage rides. Instead of shutting down really all Pinehurst, we decided to have the loading and unloading here at the bounds, and it's just gonna go down Wallace Street. And so Ellen in her office, she's gonna be working to send out notifications to the homeowners in that area to, we're gonna do a prize. If you win the most votes, you get like a free month of water, sewer, trash pickup or something.
Oh, a decorating contest?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Outstanding.
Yep, so we'll be doing that. It's, it's a quiet road. They can circle around the end of the cul-de-sac and come back. It's actually a slightly shorter route, so we can really, we have two horse and carriages this year as well. So we'll move that along. We worked with RCC to actually expand beyond just the paved area. They've wired all of this minus the stormwater BNP there and this area as well. So this will probably add, we estimate, maybe an additional 80 cars altogether. And we'll have a bus stop there as well. And then they have their employee parking that we can, we can use as well. We have the county, the little parking lot there that folks can use. And then zooming out, we once again have Food Line and Tractor Supply, and we have the bus, bus stops there as well. We did not do the fairgrounds this year because we ended up spending about $4,000 for employee coverage over there, police coverage, and light towers. So what we did, instead of that, we asked permission from the school board, and they granted it yesterday. We can park in their paved areas here. So we think that's gonna add a lot of safer parking, and we'll have a bus stop located here as well. I just have these designated as parking, but we do feel like folks will park up here and walk there, too.
So again, signs will be posted for parking. There'll be parking notices on Facebook or wherever, where to park. If you're not from here, you're gonna have a hard time knowing these places are if it's not posted somewhere.
Yep, that's a good question. And so what we've done, we've ordered either three or four of the large VDOT signs. And so we're gonna have like parking here, you know, something very simple where they know this is where you can park at. So we're working on those, parking at RCC, parking here. And I think VDOT, they sort of determine the language they'll put on there. So then the parade route is exactly the same. It starts here. The neat thing is it's at 6:00 PM, so it's the first night parade that I'm aware of. I don't know if way back when it was, but we're really excited about it. And we've had a lot of people turning out, because this year, for the first time, Kimarneck's Friday, we're Saturday, Rappahannock's Sunday. So we're hoping that all the same people will come to our parade and enter in, so we have a really big turnout. And this year, we will have, the Bay FM will be here with really big speakers actually announcing each float as they go by, what organization they are, and broadcasting that, and we'll have, in front of espresso, I'm sorry. I need to zoom down a little bit, right here. And then we'll also have the judges' table right here. So when you come around that curve, the judges will be there, and they'll be announcing what each organization is. So that's a neat addition this year, but yeah, that's sort of what we're looking at. We're doing really well with sponsorships. We've gotten multiple $2,000 sponsorships, and yeah, it's, things are going really well, so we're, we're very excited.
Sounds good.
Any questions, council?
I didn't hear you say, but I'm guessing the parade route will be the same as in the past from from Lake Electric.
Yep, down Main. Yeah, it will. And we will be closing, so the other, because it's been working out really well. We closed Main Street at the post office, and they've given permission for us to circle around and go back for folks that, that don't know. And we, we'll have a barricade here, but again, we won't be tying up Pinehurst with the horse and carriages going through the neighborhood, so that'll leave the Monocan entrance open, and, you know, you can move around in the neighborhood a little bit easier.
All right. Looks like a big deal.
Yep, we're, we're excited. We have radio ads on 98.1 and 94.5 in Richmond that start today. We have WRAR, and then we have Kimarneck Station, and we have a billboard in Richmond. And then the ones coming into town, we'll have Christmas Town put on those in about a week. So at Facebook right now, we're at over 10,000 and some people that have responded, so looking forward to it. That's my report.
All right. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to our police report. Chief?
I'm gonna come up to the podium for today's report. Joseph mentioned that it was November 7th, it was eight years.
Yep.
November 7th was eight months for me, so.
Wow.
We're on a, we're on a trajectory of goodness. Hey, a lot of exciting things happening at the PD, and tonight's one of those nights I want to share it with town council. First, I want to introduce one of our newest officers, fresh out of New York, Joseph Hayes. Certified officer, used to be a sergeant at Colonial Beach, decided he wanted to come back down and join the force for good. And so we're proud to have him. He's a lot, lot of experience in law enforcement, so it'd be a good, good asset to our team, so.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah. He's making Warsaw better. Any words you want to say?
I just have one thing. Could you put a sign up there at 3:00 in Main Street telling people to go down somewhere? I had, I had Monocan, and we're just turning everybody into shit.
Hey, oh, gotcha. So this is a, I think we can work something out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph.
And during the rehabilitation, Warsaw Police, we're, I was looking for opportunities for growth for officers that we brought on, and a way to realign the PD where we could add positions that were already existing. So restructure what we had. We were able to do that with taking our office manager position and taking a police officer position, smacking them together and combining them. And we made that into a police, police operations manager slash investigator. We had a person who qualified for both right off the bat. That's Nikki, who joined us a few months, well, I don't know how long it's been, though. It seems like years, but she
You mean that in a good way, right?
Absolutely, in a good way. She is a great asset to our team. So we presented her with the opportunity. She gladly accepted. Today, we want to make that official. She did bring her significant other, Rick, who is a firefighter. Firefighters need heroes, too. That's why she's dating, he's dating a police officer. Glad to have him here. So Nikki, if you would like to come up, I want to read the official promotion order to the town council. It's effective Monday, October 21st, 2024. Officer Nikki Boynton is hereby promoted to the rank of detective. Promotion reflects her exceptional dedication, outstanding investigative skills, and steadfast commitment to the Warsaw Police Department's Promotion reflects her exceptional dedication, outstanding investigative skills and steadfast commitment to the Warsaw Police Department's mission of providing uncompromised law enforcement services to the town of Warsaw. Detective Boynton's professionalism, respect for the community and unwavering integrity align with the department's core values of professionalism, respect, integrity, duty and excellence. Her promotion is a testament to her contributions to our agency or capability to assume a greater role in leading investigations, supporting our community and enhancing public safety. We are confident that Detective Boynton will continue to serve with distinction further in Warsaw Police Department's commitment to excellence. Congratulations on a, on a well-deserved promotion. Signed this day by me, Chief of Police. Should we get away from the podium?
I don't.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
And with that, that is the end of my report. Any questions for me?
Well, Chief, I ain't going to have too many more times you ask you this. Do you need anything?
I should probably say yes, no. We have been given everything we need and I'm only excited to be part of this agency and what we're doing. I've had more support than I expected coming into this and it just keeps getting better. So we're, we're on the upward trajectory against all the noise that's out there. These guys are steadfast and we're going to move forward and do good things for the town of Warsaw.
Thank you for what you're doing, Chief.
Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations. Should we mention the good news, the email you sent or not?
To you.
Sure.
That is good news. Be better when it's actually.
Yes, sir.
So, so the Warsaw Police Department has taken a huge step forward in becoming, we are an independent agency. But we've taken a huge step forward with the chief's leadership of being a little bit more independent. That said, share the news, please.
Oh, sorry, put me on the spot. So we are, we were approved through by the Virginia State Police for our own VSIN terminal. That'll be, is on its way to us. So we will be VSIN independent by January, I think January is the cutover date, so we're excited about that. So we don't have to rely on other agencies to do all our internal VSIN.
Very well done, very well done.
Yes, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Public Works Report.
Good evening.
Great.
Start with the treatment plant.
You're not going to state your name and position for the record? Thank you.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, average daily effluent flow for October was 173,900. A decrease of 12,300 from the month of September. Maximum effluent flow for October was 213,200. An increase of 9,200 gallons from September. October, the average effluent total nitrogen concentration was 2.73 milligrams per liter. October, the average effluent total phosphorus concentration was 0.18 milligrams per liter. Both well within our permit. Treatment plant staff cleaned and replaced UV bulbs. Plant effluent samples taken and tested for the month of October met all requirements. Moving on to the water department. Attached, you will find another water water port, we're holding strong at 3%. Staff also completed state-selected bacteria samples. All results came back absent. We also hot-tapped a water line on East Jefferson for a new construction house to be. Moving on to refuse for the month of September. Town staff made 14 trips totaling 116.71 tons of trash. No issues with the trucks this past month, everything was good. Last, public works maintenance. Staff assisted with Monday and Thursday residential trash pickup. Took care of all the bathrooms and the grounds of the park. We decorated for Halloween and prepared for a truffle treat. We have since cleaned all that up and just starting going through Christmas lights to be put up next week, so.
How many bulbs did you go through today to review?
A little over like 5,000 bulbs.
They have to individually check every single, 5,000 today, right?
All right, I'm having visions of Christmas vacation.
We've got a few new things this year, so be prepared.
All right.
Look forward to it.
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Did any committees meet that I'm not aware of? Personnel, economic development did not meet. Okay, planning commission report, Beth?
We met last Thursday.
Very good. What is the report there? I think, what's the report?
Well, that's it. I mean, we had a meeting, we had, went over, Missy was leading us and we just went over what was going on in the town.
Okay. Any action items or any recommendations, anything like that? Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, Northern Regional Jail report?
Yeah, I see they, they got a copy of the breakdown of the housing as of, actually it was as of Tuesday, I believe, there. And that was given to you tonight. Two things that, main things that were covered then was, one was, there's an organization that's called the Virginia Association of Regional Jail, large, which of course we're a member of and our superintendent, previous one and this one are very, very involved with it. She went through a number of items that are going through the state legislature, legislate in the next six months or so. And so the things that, that pertain to the jail, she went through those things and whether they agree with them or not and what they're trying to do with those things. The other thing was, since COVID, programs at the regional jail have been, you know, during COVID, they couldn't, people couldn't go in, people couldn't leave. Well, unless they were, you know, paroled or whatever. But it couldn't bring them together. You know, they were segregated by their pods and that's, you know, everything was kept that way. And it's taken a while to get programs back up. Jessica Middlebrook is the director of programs there and she gave a report on it. There are a number of programs they've already instituted, a number that they're getting ready to institute. Many of them pertain to educating and trying to help the prisoners before they get out. So they have a better chance once they get out in public. Some of it deals with drug use and things like that. Some just deals with jobs and, you know, different things that could help them become more successful as they lead. They even, some of it deals with, I know they have a Bible study group, they have a number of things, but it's just the beginning of it. There's quite a few more things they're trying to get, get back going there. And that's about it.
Any questions for our Vice Mayor? Thank you, Paul. Okay, the American Rescue Plan Act, the money's getting pretty low there.
I know. The mayor and I were just speaking. It's sad, we've had all this money for years sitting in here, but it helped to pay for a lot of infrastructure, so it's great. Right now, we have $68,863.12 remaining for, total dispersed is $1,472,886.88. And if you look, I'm just going to highlight some of the large key items. The VDOT Tap Project was $463,119. The bounds to get everything up to where we are now permitted through DEQ and everything's closed out. That was $161,000. And also includes the trails and things like that as well. You know, large items like that, that we, we went through. But yeah, we've got $68,863 left and really that could be for either the community market or probably needs to go towards that, I would think. So that's sort of what we're looking at and otherwise I think we're all set.
Any questions, Council?
Can we go back to the end of this year to extend it or?
No, next, mm-hmm. They gave us an extension.
Okay. And for some reason I thought the end of this year would.
Used to be, yep.
The end of this year is to obligate it. And we've fully obligated all of our funds.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I remember that evening that we were notified that the town was going to get that much. And I was like, that's not right. That's, that's wrong.
It was nice.
Well, in the case of the Tap Project, the Tap Project would have been a major burden. It would hit the reserves hard.
Yeah.
Hard. When we got into the Tap Project, we were not expecting it to be a cash in, in, in.
Match.
Match, so. All right. All right, looking at old business, 74 Main, what's, we have new there?
Yep, not a lot of movement, but we did place a large order, I think about $46,000 for the HVAC units to come in. So those have been placed and they're coming in. The asbestos has been removed and we're working with USDA to start the reimbursement process for some of these items. So that's sort of where we are. I really think with the contractor doing the brewery, trying to finish that up, I think once that's done, 74 Main will start to roll a lot quicker.
All right. Any questions, Council? Well, replacement, anything new there?
Yep, we were contacted by the company this week, actually. And I don't know if they watch our meetings or how they knew, but it is time to reach out to them. So I think I'm going to sit down with Mr. Schools and we're going to start on that. So trying to get some numbers together for Council to review and some options for loans, what we can do, maybe USDA or some low-interest, long-term loans and start working on that.
Would we go through hypothetically, if we were going to do a long-term bond or municipality sharing, would we go through the planning commission or would we go through the county's IDA program?
I think it's, it would be us directly. We, we would enter it. Yeah, like we have, we already have one for the treatment plant. Yeah, we would enter into it.
Yeah, we entered into that through like VRWA, I think it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the tenant's site for the, the well to go?
Just right there, still in the Finston lot.
Same area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Remind me where that is exactly. Is it by the school?
No, off of Scott Town. Yeah, where the, the water tower is.
Yeah. All right. The DHCD Housing Project.
I don't have anything substantive to report. I do know that the architect in charge of the, of that part of the project met with the PDC and I think did walkthroughs and generated a report for DHCD that was required. And so I know that step has been accomplished. And so I'm hoping we can start seeing some rubber meet the road here soon.
It's a slow-moving process.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll keep on it. Going to new business, we have our Town Bucks drawing. Joseph, I believe if my memory serves, we launched this plan promotion that we would draw five lucky winners from the town of Warsaw to win a $100 Town Buck Award?
Yep, and it's just town residents only in there.
All right. So the Town Bucks program are participating local businesses is anti-strengthening style. And if you haven't been in Anna's lately, stop in. Wow. Wow.
Like a brand-new building.
Yeah, lasagna ain't bad either. Burke's Fine Jewelry, Chin In, Colonial Collectibles, Commonwealth Florist, Cuddle Bugs Child Development Center, Espresso Cafe, Excellent Eats, Feather Your Nest, Finn and Pearl, but there's that. Holly's Massage, Hunan Village, I Spy, Jinx This and That, Little River Seafood, Main Street Antiques and Collectibles, Main Street Hair, Michelle Sweet Treats, Home of the Official Warsaw Cinnamon Roll, Northern Neck Popcorn, Old Rip Paint Tap House, Relish, Teresa's Nails, Unity, Warsaw Nails, Water Shops, Willow Stitch and Wolf and Wag. So, and we're, and they're, they're very appreciative and they're starting to see.
Oh, yeah. We've already been getting calls of when can they get reimbursed? And so we're trying to just do everything at one time for simplicity's sake.
So this isn't the Virginia Lottery, but the Vice Mayor, would you mind picking?
I know.
Turn the whole.
All right, so the first recipient of the Warsaw Town Bucks for $100 is Chris Hathaway, Chris Hathaway.
Hathaway.
Chris Hathaway?
It's not, doesn't say that, Morgan Lane.
Okay, well, former employee, congratulations.
It doesn't say that. All right, our number two winner is Greg Moskoff of Belleville Lane. And our third winner is Cynthia Flickinich on Quail Trail.
Flickinger.
Flickinger, yeah.
I'm having a problem, man.
It is small print in your defense, I will say.
Not that small print.
I was trying to take up for the mayor. Whoa.
Under the bus.
We all heard that.
And this Wanda Hayes at Atkinson Drive. And our final, our final winner, number five, is Timothy Markish of Wallace Street. Nice.
All right, congratulations, everybody.
So I gotta say just a little something because we can. This was a, this was a trial. This was taking 7,500 bucks and seeing what would you do with it that would benefit the community. And there was a few mistakes made, sure. We've learned from this. I don't know if this will be a program next year or not. There was some, there was a little bit of negativity, but then we, there was a lot of positive feedback that I thought overwhelmingly came back. So I would love Council to look at this next year and say, is this something we want to do again? I would argue it probably needs to have a little bit more money into it and apply some of these things that we learned from this launch. But I talked to a few other people in other localities. I mean, this kind of thing doesn't happen, right? So it makes us unique, it makes us different, it makes us appreciate our businesses, helps our citizens. So I was a reluctant supporter, now I'm a fan. Okay. EIP application, Hummingbird Learning Center, Mr. Questonberry?
Yes, so EIP is the Economic Center Grant Program. And for those that may not know, that is the rent assistance program for a new or relocating store or business or establishment to come to Warsaw or to open in Warsaw. And that is a $600 a month rent assistance program for 12 months with the assigned two-year lease. So for this, we have an 84 Main, which has been vacant for years in the lower part. We have, let me see here, Hummingbird Learning Center LLC, which is a childcare facility. And they are requesting the 7,200. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum for the committee. So this was, again, just new business with the Council. I did have a recommendation to approve from Mr. English and from.
Sarah Carroll?
Yep. So have those two. And again, they, this is pending all their licensures and receiving all those things. But you can read through this, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. But childcare is tough to find in our area and I'm glad to see this. But again, no formal recommendation since we didn't have a quorum.
So, so Council, we have two, two choices here. We could, we could table this for another 30 days or we could take action without the committee, which we've done before. So there's those two paths. Or we could just say, no, this is not something we want to do. Joseph, just to be certain, what's our budget line? Can we take on this incentive? Do we still have funds for it?
This would probably be the only one we could do this fiscal year.
Which is still June.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you do the full amount. And we've done partial amounts and all types of things.
Council for discussion, what's your pleasure? Is this something we feel we should do? It is, what Mr. Questonberry said, there's a childcare need in the community. I know Sarah Carroll, who is, I think, the only provider in the town.
That and YMCA, or have they started back up or something?
I think they've started back up.
Yeah, I think so.
So Sarah's all for this, so, I mean, that would be a direct compare to her, but she feels for it. It would fill an empty building uptown. So there's that. We have the money in the budget line to do it. So what's your discussion? What you think?
If they just got it today to read, they, they may need some time, dude. I got mine yesterday and had a chance to read through it and all that stuff. It is something that it's good about around here, but the one question I have, okay, is this is not a retail. this is not a retail business of any type, and all of ours in the past have been given to retail businesses, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, that's the one thing, you know, if there's a chance, we, you know, we have retail coming in or, you know, something like that, because they are going to be subsidized. All right, and then, you know, if you read through that, they do get, you know, some subsidization, you know, so I would rather give them a chance, you know, to read through it and have any questions or anything like that, to put it off till next month, if it's not something that has to be done this month.
No, just a clarifying point, it was in last month's packet, but then we scheduled the committee to meet earlier today, and they got another copy of it, probably like a week, maybe less than a week ago. So, they've had it over a month, but again, I know we generally like to have a recommendation from the committee, so I totally understand that.
So, this was in last month's pack and the committee's had it, but couldn't meet. The vice mayor's thinking we should kick it to another month. Is there anyone that, you all agree? Do you want to take action?
Well, I couldn't make that committee meeting, but if we can reschedule it soon, again, I'll try to work it in.
Sure.
We can look it over, so.
And Joseph, there's, at least as far as you know, there's no pending deadline that this has, that's, it's not going to make or break the deal, I hope.
No, I don't think so.
All right, well, counsel, if you are agreeable, let's give the Economic Development Committee another shot to take a look and see what they think, and if, and we'll take it up next month.
Sounds good, I'll do that.
All right. Subdivision application submission, Rhodes Place and Broadus Creek Development. We need to figure, talk about that just a little bit and schedule a public hearing for Thursday, December twelfth, of course, that would be at six o'clock. So, just give us a high level of what this application is.
Sure. So, again, this is just to get this in front of you, I've requested the developer and, and/or their representatives to be here at next month's meeting to make a presentation in time for the public hearing. Again, it is a subdivision by Mr. Gregory Packett that he owns approximately sixty-two point oh-eight acres that encompasses from the forest or the faces-in-the-trees area all the way over to near the southern state's location of town, so that whole back swath of town. And right now, it says total units proposed is three hundred and twenty-one, with condos slash apartments being one hundred and sixty-six, single-family dwelling being eighty-five, and villas being sixty-eight, and those, the sixty-eight are each targeted. Again, if you go to, let's see, well, it's somewhere in here. We asked that he include elevations for what the homes would look like. He is including a pool and clubhouse, and we are, we did ask that he place his proffer statement in here as well, and for those just knowledge on that, a proffer is something that a developer freely offers up to the community, to the governing body, to assist in the approval of a project. So, I know way back when, when I was working with the county and Fones Close was there, I think it was like at home number two hundred and fifty, they had to build a new fire station. So, those are proffers that the developer freely offers up to the community or to the governing body. So, this is, it's a large development right now. I think in town, we have just shy of nine hundred housing units, and this at full build-out is at over three hundred, so it's big. So, just to put it into context of what we're talking about here, I do think it's a good area of town for development. I think that we definitely need to practice due diligence and think about this very carefully, but everything is in here, and so next month, they're requesting further application, a public hearing, and they will be here to make a presentation.
All right, counsel, so tonight is not about, you know, approving, not approving, it's just about scheduling the public hearing so they can present their case to the public and start the process. Is that fair?
Yep.
So, it would be a motion needed for a public hearing on the Thursday, December twelfth at six PM. Is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And they will be here.
Yep, I've requested that they be here, yeah.
Can I ask something before then? I mean, before we get going, the first few pages and the pictures and the, about where these are going to be, is there any way we can get this much bigger? I mean, I cannot make head to tails, even where the places were that they're talking about. And the second thing is, we're not planning on taking action at the next one after the public hearing, though.
There won't be a approval. What it will be is that they're going to be submitting the application for review, right? Is that what it's worth, Joseph?
Yeah, so it's a two-part, this is for the approval of the general concept phase, where if you give the general thumbs up, that means that they can start paying an engineer one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go out and really get into the minutia of lot lines and water and sewer lines, so it gives them a green light to know that they have a good feeling going forward. So, that's how it's broken down in our DMO, so it's the general concept phase.
So, it's not, it's not an approval, but it's approval for the next step?
None of this land needs to be re, I mean, changed from R, whatever commercials to R-12 or whatever, they want R-12 for everything, right?
It's called a conditional rezone, so the whole swath of land is considered a common plan of development, and so it would be conditionally rezoned, and the word conditionally is the key word here because it can, it comes with conditions that you all set. So, the whole swath of that would be conditionally rezoned, yes.
I mean, yeah, I'm just saying my opinion from what I could read on this, I have a lot of questions and.
Oh, yeah.
Lot of, I have a lot of problems with it, too, but I'll listen next, you know, next month.
We have a full plan sets here.
There's no way, even after listening, I'll be ready to make any kind of decision next, next month, I can tell you that.
Well, again, you know, they'll come and they'll talk, and then counsel will ask questions and we'll talk here, and if we, if this counsel agrees to go to the next step, then we do. If we decide not to take action, we won't. But it is not a final approval by any means. To your point, Paul, there's, there's due diligence, community has to have their chance to ask questions. I would imagine there's a second public hearing or just the one?
Yeah, well, this is just for this phase, then there's a whole nother one, yeah, and the planning commission will be here as well to hear it. So, what I, I actually have digital links to the plans, I'll email those out, and then I have hard copies of the big ones here for you, if y'all want to come in anytime and review.
First of all, I couldn't read the writing and everything.
Yeah. We just got these, yeah.
With the map, I couldn't tell for sure.
Yeah, you can, you can always email me anytime and I'll, I'll work with you.
Didn't he bring forth sometime a presentation about developing that land in the past to do something with it with Style Brand or another company or something?
Well, I can't remember, I know Style Craft had their own stuff on the bypass, I'm not sure.
He did, he did, and it was, from what I recall, similar in size and flavor. I don't think he had a contractor behind him, now he does, and, you know, I don't know if it was the economy, that I don't really, no, I don't, can't read his mind, but he went dark. He went dark.
Yep.
So, he's back, and so this is, this is the process we do.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, just a reminder to counsel that we do have three positions open on the planning commission that we need to appoint. We have three names that have said that they would be interested in being appointed. What I'd like to do is read those names to you tonight, and so we can think about that and talk about that and take action next, next meeting. There may be one or two others that raised their hand, or there may not, but that said, we have Mr. Chris Evans from Pinehurst, who has decided that he would love to serve on the planning commission. We have Ms. Belinda Reynolds, who has agreed that she would like to serve on the planning commission, and Mr. Berkeley Cash, which he has indicated that he would like to serve on the planning commission, so it is actually a little bit odd to have enough names to fill our seats, so very excited about that. So, think about that and be ready to make some points.
We have three open seats, right?
All right. Next is closed session for prospective businesses and legal matters.
Mr. Mayor, we'll be going to closed session under two point two dash three seven one one, A five prospective business and A eight legal matters.
All right, counsel, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all.